To get started, if I can get everyone to stand. Everybody's in place and just give your attention.
Father God, we just give you thanks and praise for this beautiful day, Father God. We thank you for the voice that you have sent to us, Father God. And Father, today I just want to give you special thanks for these young people here today who are taking an interest in learning about their community, Father God. And I just ask you to bless them and the families that they represent, Father God. I've zipped up the entire city of Muleshoe to you, Father God. And we just thank you for the blessings that you give us. We ask for your protection for the men and women who are serving our country here and in other parts of the world, Father God, and just may your hand be upon them. We give you thanks and praise and all glory. In your name we pray, amen.
Let the record show that we're all here. We have a forum. And if I could get you to join Councilor McElroy in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Come on. Bless you. I want to give you a question. It's close to the door. I see it's a sweatshirt. It is, first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here this afternoon. We're glad that the youth advisory council is with us. Mr. Thornton, glad you're here. Gil. Audi, we're glad that you're here. Our legal representative. Glad Ramon and Zana and David's here. We will take time for a minute to receive public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address any issues on our agenda, it is at this time that we'll allow you to do that. If not, we'll go ahead and get started with our agenda. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of December the 11th of last year. I pray that everyone has reviewed those and I'll make a motion if we approve those minutes.
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor of approving those minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to receive an update on negotiations with Muleshoe Country Club concerning the city's participation in the continued operation of the golf course. David, I'm going to turn that over to you, let you kind of review what the committee has discussed and...
Thanks, Mayor. And I know the council member that a couple of meetings ago, we approached the council about, number one, do we believe that Muleshoe needs a golf course? And if we do, how do we go about that? At that time, the mayor appointed a committee of himself and Eric McElroy and me to serve on that committee. We've met with the country club several times. And the proposal now that you have before you is a revision of the agreement that we entered into with the country club in 2007 or 2008 concerning the lease of the golf course. What this agreement does is offers to purchase all the facilities of the country club at the value that it's on the tax roll bar, which I think is $141,000. And then to lease those facilities back to the country club at $1,300 a month. Came up with that lease price, that recoups the city's investment in that property over a 10-year period, plus any taxes that the city would lose during that time. So that's where we came up with that. The lease does, this lease agreement does a lot of things that I hope will make the golf course sustainable and make it where the country club can operate the golf course. Number one, I think it provides the city some input on the activities out there in that it would allow the city council to appoint one full member to the country club board of directors. It also appoints the city manager to serve as an advisor to that board, a non-voting advisor member to that board. It requires the country club to develop and submit to the city council a realistic budget for their operations out there. It requires them to provide to the city monthly a financial statement that accurately reflects their financial activities out there. It also sets up a new membership class right now that the club essentially has, essentially has two membership classes. One's a full member, which gives you access to the country club facilities, the restaurant, the lounge, the swimming pool, everything, and access to the golf course. They also have a social membership, which only gives a member access to the restaurant and the lounge and the swimming pool and those facilities, but not the golf course. What this agreement does is establishes another class of members that would be for golf course use only. And that fee would be somewhat less than a full membership. And hopefully, hopefully that's a cheap enough membership that they can attract more members and when you reach enough more members, the club will actually receive more money. The disagreement also calls for the city to commit $85,000 a year for the operation of the golf course only. None of those funds will be used for the operation of the country club facilities and all this swimming pool. It will all be used on the golf course. That amount will vary. It'll never exceed $90,000. But as membership increases and revenues increase out there, then the city's contribution will be reduced by, actually be reduced by half of the additional revenues. Country club will get the other half because of the increased cost to operate the golf course because there are more members. So I think it's a workable deal. We've spent a good bit of time in negotiation with the country club on how we set up those memberships, what privileges that those different memberships have. I think we've got that kind of nailed down. One of the other things that it did, any data use fees or any membership fees proposed by the country club has to be approved by the city council as a whole. Some of those fees were still in negotiation with, with the country club on that. The agreement spells out what responsibilities that the city would have as far as maintenance of the facilities out there. I know Councilmember Mason sent me a text over the weekend and says they're supposed to be in Exhibit A, and I just hadn't gotten to that. Exhibit A describes the property. So I did, I gave you a copy of it this now. And it's not complete because I need to go out there and do the inventory. But other than just describe the property out there, I also started listing in Exhibit A the things the city would be responsible for as the landlord out there. Or we'll be responsible for heat and air conditioning unit. That I think is pretty obvious. We will not be responsible for refrigerators and coolers and furniture fixtures and those kind of things. So if the cook stove goes out, then the country club would have to replace the cook stove. But I wanted to do an inventory and that's still some negotiations we'll have to do with the country club. But I think we're, I know Eric met with them and talked about some of those things. So I think those, they just need to be listed out so we don't get five years down the road and go, well now, when David was here, he told me this. Well, let's put it in here so there's not any questions about that. So we're still working on that. So basically on that, we're talking about the little fixtures inside the country club building.
Right. What about swimming pool area? No. None of that will be included?
No. And I want to make it clear that no city tax dollars go for the operation of the bar, the restaurant, and the swimming pool. Absolutely no, no city money goes to the swimming pool. We've got a swimming pool. And they understand that. I don't think that's an issue.
Is that something that's spelled out in this lease agreement or will it be spelled out?
Audi's helping us look through that to make sure that we've got it spelled out tight enough. That's what we're trying to do. That's what I want to do in Exhibit A, and I've started doing that somewhat, and I didn't get complete with it today. But I want, what I'm doing there is saying the city's responsible for A, B, C, and D, not, not these other things.
So it can be detailed as far as like what Councilor Parker said? I mean, it's not going to be this, it's not, here's your responsibility, here's our responsibility.
Right. That's, that's what I intended. Because probably the players that are doing the negotiation right now, there's a really good chance they're not going to be in place in that. So we want it, we want it where we can refer to this document and not to what somebody said.
The only other question I have as far as golf course, is that going to include any kind of maintenance and upkeep for them, whatever might crop up on sheds?
Sheds are kind of a, an interesting subject. Kart sheds at the country club were built by individuals to put their carts in. In other words, I have a cart out there and I have a cart shed that I paid for. It doesn't actually belong to the club, nor does the club do maintenance on it. I own each of the cart sheds.
Now, if my door blows off, I fix it.
You fix it.
So the sheds are personal?
They ain't club or city property.
Right.
But it's, I guess everything above seems, yeah, is in a sense, but it's not really.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a... Is there any lease amount for the, for the use of that?
I own the shed.
It's yours. It's your shed.
Yeah, I don't have a deed, I don't have a title that, I can't move, you know, to pay electricity.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, they do, there's an electric charge.
So that actual facility belongs to you and it, it, leave it on the land underneath it?
The country club owns the land under most of the cart sheds. Some of the cart sheds, some of their maintenance barns, it's actually built straight right away.
Where are you owning it?
Public, I'm, it's in public right away. So, yeah, so the cart sheds are...
A different animal.
They're kind of a different animal. But right now, and this will continue, I hope, maybe this answered your question. No, the city will not be responsible for repairs on the cart sheds.
Okay.
Like you were saying, if your door blows off?
Yes.
Then you replace it.
Actually, on my cart shed, last year, year before, the tin on top was coming off. I was out there and that one went back on.
You took care of it?
Yeah. And I think everybody that has a cart out there understands that.
What happens to one if they abandon?
You know, there's been some cases where, I don't think, if they just left and gave it back to the club, did the club actually sell it? I know they sold one not long ago. Or if it's abandoned for a period of time, the club just takes it and then resells it? I'm not.
That might be something else, we need to get some help on to clarify some of that.
I don't know if three attorneys can figure that out.
That's my biggest concern is making sure that everything is spelled out.
Well, I won't be stuck, I mean, it's probably not going to be a whole lot of money involved one way or the other, but I don't want to be stuck with, okay, a big windstorm comes through here and takes out six of them.
And say, whoa, you got to take care of that?
Yeah. Well, no, I don't think either of them has a cart.
It's a pretty well-known fact that you're responsible for upkeep and maintenance.
But let's, let's say somebody decides that they just want completely out or they're going to move and they sell their shed to someone else.
Right.
Is that person, let's make sure that they understand.
Yeah.
This is not going to be, if your door blows off, we're not putting it back on.
Well, and I think that's somewhat implied because you bought it from that person, not from the club, and you don't pay a lease on it. You know, we've got a deal out there right now, actually, a vehicle missed the curb out there and knocked out the end of one of the cart sheds. There was actually a cart in one of them that didn't hurt the cart. Instead of fixing it back up, he just bought a shed somewhere else and moved it. But it's, it's open and it's, it's a nice storm.
It's a nice storm. I don't know if it ever... So then whose responsibility does that depend?
It's the guy that owns the cart shed.
Was it on the right away?
Actually, I think that one, it, those cart sheds are back to back, they're one on either side, and I think right away is pretty much right between those two. So I think one of them probably was on the right away and one wasn't.
I don't think there's any wrong with spilling everything out.
And I have no problem with that.
Yeah, it's great that everybody knows that that's who it is, but it's just like Gary said, you know, what happens, I mean, you know, not everybody plays it.
The way it's always been is not necessarily going to hold any water.
That's right.
But you're...
That's exactly right.
For purposes of the agreement, I think the council will have to sit down with it and look at it or apply an exclusive mindset rather than an inclusive. Anything that's not mentioned is not addressed by the city. So rather than listing, trying to list everything and put it either in a category of yes, we'll handle this or no, we won't, we'll just handle the yes, we'll handle this. If it's not in our handled list?
Then we don't.
It's, it is clear that it's someone else's problem.
If it's not listed...
As they can hash it out between themselves of whether it's the individual or the club or whoever.
Right.
It's just not us.
If it's not listed, it's not us.
Okay.
Which brings me back to that other question where it says if we're not going to be responsible for swimming pool and all that is, you know, because, you know, I tried to read through this, but it's very difficult. And that's why I said if someone can direct me to say right here in this section is where it says you're not going to be responsible, that the city won't be responsible.
Right. And that's somewhat what I kind of tried to do on Exhibit A. I think you'll find some of that there.
Because I can see what you're saying is that, you know, if it's not under there, then you're not going to be...
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great way.
You end up with a never-ending list of bunny trails. Well, okay, we didn't list this in either category, and that just kind of saves us from painting ourselves into a corner.
One other question I had before we go any further, and I forget about it. If this goes through like we're talking about and the city provides, or I don't know if we call it provides, but appoints a member to the board?
Right.
Okay. I don't know how things are done out there, but I've heard people talk in the past, just in conversation. Are all decisions for the club made by the board or no? Are there things that call for a full member vote?
There are things called that would call for a full member vote. This would be one of them. Anything that's, that has bylaws, changes to them, or any major changes, you have to bring to a full member. And this, the club entering into this agreement, they're going to have to make changes too for bylaws. And they're going to have to have a full member vote to accept this.
Right. To make those changes and then to enter into the agreement.
So this, what we're talking about has to be...
What I'm wondering is, an appointed member of the board?
Right.
What good is that going to do?
Well, for one thing, it, it provides, certainly provides some input from the city council. Now, I say that, the appointed member, and I don't think we would limit that to council members. I would think it would be more appropriate for it to be a council member. But I would think that the council could elect one, someone else.
But mostly it's kind of the watch guard for the chair. And is that, that appointed person, are they going to be a full member of, a full voting member of the entire?
Which is also going to require a bylaws and then...
Sure.
On their part.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay.
A full, a full member.
Okay. I didn't know exactly how the board worked and what decisions they made, if they could make decisions without a full member vote. I, I just don't know how to say it.
The country club is an unincorporated association of members. Which kind of means it's kind of a group of folks that got together and said, I'd like to do this. And I think that through the years, different boards have made different decisions. And I think by being an unincorporated association of members, it's kind of a loose book together organization. They, when you read through their bylaws, some of them are kind of archaic. They made sense in the 50s, but they really don't now. They made sense with what they were trying to do in the 50s, but it doesn't make sense with what they need to be trying to do now. And so they understand. You know, with the council being able to review their budget, to review their financial statements, I have offered to work with whoever they hire out there to work with, watching the budget and staying in those budget things and looking at some of the, not doing that full time and not taking away from what else I do, but to hopefully provide some assistance to have some management out there.
Well, it sounds to me like that's what's probably needed worse than anything out there. And I really think in the situation that the whole place has gotten this up into this point, I hope that everybody out there realizes, look out there.
I, I think that especially the board that's there now, this is, this is Brad Newell.
Who I remember.
I miss John Sager. Tim Black.
Evan here.
Alwood.
Marshall Poole.
Yeah.
Scott Klein.
Scott Miller.
Rick White.
Yeah.
And... I might be missing some. Question is, how many board members are there at present?
I'd like to go back and look at their bylaws, seven or eight? It's eight, I believe.
Eight members.
Maybe seven.
What I was curious about is, is there an even or an odd number? Because if there is now an appointed member through the city to make it an odd number, I think that'd be a good thing. You avoid ties in any kind of vote.
Well, it kind of depends on how their bylaws are set as far as, as part of any procedure, whether the mayor votes, I mean, the chair votes, the chair does.
So is all that going to have to be revisited?
That, that's in their bylaws.
Through their bylaws.
Yes.
Yeah, but, yeah, with them.
And what they could do in their bylaws is say, let's say they have seven members. We're going to continue to have seven members. Six are elected by the membership to lunch and point to the city council.
True.
So...
I just want to make sure I understand everything. So the city...
When you do, let me know.
Well, as much as possible. The city would buy everything.
The city owns the golf course.
Okay, they own the golf course and they would buy?
Right.
Everything else for $140,000?
Yeah.
Where, where does that money come from?
It's called fund balance of reserves. Money that the city has in the bank. Now, one of the things, and Eric's the first one to pointed it out when we, first meeting we had with, with the representatives from the board, was that the city did not intend to raise taxes to make this deal work. And kind of that, and that no taxes would be, would be spent for the lounge or the restaurant or the swimming pool. Those were laid out right up front.
I think it's a very good idea to make sure that anybody with any question whatsoever knows that that is the way it's going to be.
And that's, that's the reason we need to see the financial statements, we need to see the budget, we need to see what we own.
Because we all know, I mean, it goes without saying, there's going to be people that think this is a good idea, that think that we need to keep a golf course open in the city of Muleshoe, and I'm one of them. And there's going to be people that say, why are we throwing good money after bad? And everything in between? So it's...
And of course, there's a chance that, there's a chance the council says, we don't want to buy them. We'll make the annual compensation, we'll make some things. There's a chance that when the membership, the country club votes on this, they could say, we're not selling now. Because those, those folks who've been making investment through the years, I don't think they put up the money to start with. They're not going to recruit any of the money they put in. None of that's going to individuals who have supported that through the years. It could be the country club that says, we don't want to do it. I think this agreement, we can make it work with or without the city owning the property out there. You know, we could still provide some funds to help operate the golf course, we could still have membership on the country club board of directors, we could still look at their budget, we could still look at financial statements as it pertains to the golf course.
As long as we have...
We have to look at all of their financial statements so we feel comfortable where, where funds are going.
Yeah.
Now, and I agree, and that's why I would, what I would ask the council to do tonight is consider authorizing the committee to continue to negotiate within these parameters and to expand those to more detail it so we know where we are. The other option, if, you know, the first question we asked was, does the council believe that the city needs to have a, that Muleshoe needs to have a golf course? And the answer was yes. The alternative to this is the city operate the golf course. Yeah. My best guess for the city to operate the golf course, just the golf course, would cost the city $150,000 to $180,000. If we can do this for 80, 85,000. Chance for that to reduce as membership increase, it, it's a more physically responsible plan than just running the golf course.
Within this agreement, they're listed like full membership, social. Who would set those prices as to what that would be?
The country club would set the prices, but they have to be approved by the city council.
So everything would come back around this way?
Yes.
Green fees?
Any, any fees associated with the golf course would have to be approved by the city council. Social members, they could set those wherever they want.
Excluding tournaments?
Yeah, excluding tournaments and those.
Just membership fees?
Yeah, they'd use fees and membership fees.
So see, really, with this, with this investment, we have a lot more control over the way things continue to work.
Control, oversight, I think maybe is a better sign to do. We're going to have some oversight, but...
And just in what Joe had been talking about, in those memberships, are those considered family memberships?
They, they are. I don't think they have any individual memberships. That may be something, you know, some clubs do have individual memberships.
Right, that's, I just... So because, you know, just in case somebody asks and they, well, it's going to be, if it changes or whatever, they...
Right, the memberships that are listed in the agreement are family memberships.
I'm not trying to speak for everybody here by any stretch, but I really think our main concern is, and I think it's being done, I may be wrong as far as we need to change anything or whatever, is to make sure that regardless of how this is done, if we do anything at all, whether we own the property or lease it back to them, whether they keep it and we help out with whatever, it doesn't matter how it's done, to make sure we have checks and balances, to make sure that money we put in is going where it's intended to go.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's, I think that's the main concern, is to have, now, that is controlled, I mean, as far as where that goes.
Sure.
But I think, you know, advisory suggestions, maybe some better ideas than people have talked about.
And hopefully with, if we can get, if they get on track to adopt a budget and to stick with the budget and look at those finances and know really where they are, then in two or three years, it's down at the city council, you expect that and you know more what you're looking for. You expect that, and you know more what you're looking for. One of the provisions in the agreement is that they have a proactive, ongoing membership recruitment and expansion program.
And would all that come to council, too, or is that something that you would, you would come up with?
Through the city manager and the appointed member, it'll say, "Yeah, they're doing that," or "No, they..."
Okay. I mean, so we would know what that would be?
They need to pick that up, yeah. And, you know, that could take a lot of different forms. I know some things have been talked about, but just, we'll see how that goes. But to me, this, this agreement, if it's adopted, and if we get it ironed out, and we will, is in lieu of the city running the golf course, for considerable money, and what it's going to take to provide assistance.
So by doing this, the club would hire someone to take care of the ground, they would do all of that, and they would take care of?
Yes. It essentially will work like it is now, as far as the operations.
It's just that they are going to...
It's just that we're going to provide more checks and balances.
And that grant will come to the city.
Yeah. This is going to, if we purchase the property, it gives them some money up front to satisfy some debt, and to have some operating expense.
About the terms of the lease, do you think, in assessing, that it'd be 20 years, or do you think 10 years is more viable?
It's supposed to be reviewed every year, right?
Yeah. You can't really go past 20 years. Well, I guess you could if it's fair market value lease, but I wouldn't want to go past 20 years.
Well, I mean, do they need it that long? 10 years would be better? Can still have a year to year?
And whether you want to do this again?
Yeah, I'd probably not.
It does, right now, the lease does have some pretty clear language on breach. 10 days after written notice of breach, the agreement's over. So if it goes south, after we get it ironed out, like David said, it goes south, we have a quick way out. 10 days after written notice, this lease is gone. Which gets us part of the way to what you're talking about, that...
There is some provisions in there for us to adjust rent there. The rent's not locked in for 20 years. And it's not tied to anything, that's right. It's just the city could come in and say, "We believe the lease should be more than that, and that's what it is."
So that can be adjusted?
Yes.
So...
Not tied to inflation, or, you know, just, the city determines that the fair market lease is more than that.
You just make that determination?
Yeah.
Definitely, I think there's some other little things that kind of need to be...
Sure. And I was looking at this, and I've worked on this often on today, there's some stuff about the swimming pool under the maintenance paragraph. That's something that I'm going to...
What's the shape of the heating and air conditioning out there already?
Probably going to need to be replaced within three to five years. So there's also, they are operating on propane right now, because their gas line was losing too much gas, and nobody knows exactly where that gas line is. It comes from number 17 T-box, where there used to be a house. I think it probably goes to the well, and then back to the... So we very well could be looking at expense pretty quickly for installing the gas line.
Where would that come from, that expense?
Could it come from the alleyway, or from the south?
Well, it's not coming from the south, but there's not gas in the alley or up behind the Country Club. It's the next alley over. We're probably looking at $5,000 to do that. That will come out of reserves, fund balance. So there is, there's that.
That could probably be recouped in a surprising amount of time with the difference in price.
Well, and of course, we're not going to be paying utilities, so we wouldn't recoup it, but I don't like propane in the building, I don't like propane anywhere. It's a danger.
So actually, that old gas line came from that well?
I think, I think. Nobody really knows. But it originates up there where that old house used to be, up there where 17 T-box.
Probably the well used to be on that one.
So I don't know. I don't think anybody knows where the gas line is.
Is any of this going to affect the money that's already going to the Country Club that we budgeted forward as $14,000 or whatever?
That money will be in there.
That just stays in there?
Yeah. No, we won't, we won't.
This won't be in addition to?
It won't be in addition to, no. City will also maintain some memberships for city employees that they can purchase at a reduced rate, and provide some green fees for city employees and council members. That didn't change.
So this is a good beginning?
Really, what this, item two does, is it leads us right to item three, and I think what David and the rest of committee is curious about, is if the council would like to take, either to approve or disapprove this, and to head the committee in the right direction to find tend this agreement, if that's what they choose, and to work on a little more, and maybe bring that to the next council meeting for a final approval.
I personally don't feel comfortable saying, "Yeah," the way it is right now.
I think what we're asking, though, we don't want to go past this deal off. Oh, man, I'd never do that. You know? Is this the general parameters? Yeah, we understand the fine tuning that we need to do. I really like all his thoughts about these things are, we'll take care of these things if this, if it's not listed, we don't do it.
Okay, I agree.
And that's going to make that a lot cleaner to do that.
So do you really need a motion?
I think approve and agree, or do we just continue on? I think this is a motion for the committee to continue negotiations within this.
I like that.
Continuation, yeah.
Yes, I like that a lot better.
Yes.
Not approve and agree, by all.
Right.
That's what I was, the way I would word it. I'll make a motion that we allow the committee to continue in negotiations with the Country Club to try to reach an agreement within...
Within the general parameters.
Within these general parameters.
And I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. No ask for any more discussion. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. And I can assure you that probably David and the rest of the committee would like input at any time if you come up with any ideas, or need your input to make sure it's in there. Okay. Next thing, are we moving on? Next thing on our agenda is to consider approving resolution number R 689-0113, implementing GASB Statement 54, adopting a fund balance policy defining ending fund balances, and delegating authority for assignment of ending fund balances. I'm sure you all understand all that. And so, this is, this is...
One of those deals the officers come to, and say, "You've got to do this now." It standardizes our reporting system to conform with standards set up by GASP, so all the cities look alike. Essentially, what this does, it takes our fund balance that we have, that our fund balance is unrestricted. Council can spend that on whatever they choose to do that on. This policy allows the city to restrict those funds into four different types of categories. In other words, if you wanted to restrict those funds, set aside a certain amount of funds for use to provide improvements to the park over the next six years, then those funds become non-spendable. They're not funds that are unrestricted. You can set up a count that these funds are designated to satisfy debt, so they're non-spendable. They're no longer unrestricted. And then the fifth definition is the unsigned funds are unrestricted funds. I asked Randy when we talked about doing this, I said, "Is this, how's this going to change what we did?" He said, "Probably not." But it does, it provides standardized reporting for credit companies that write our credit, should we want to do a bond issue or not. But it makes all, all cities kind of look, all governmental entities reporting look standard.
So this does not mean that we have to categorize anything?
No.
We can leave everything as is.
Right. You can leave it as unrestricted.
But you have the option to dedicate.
But it gives you the authority to restrict those funds for a purpose, and it gives it a definition that all other governmental entities are going to have the same definition. So they don't look at, here's the definition, Muleshoe got it, Sudan's got a different one, Lubbock's got a different definition. We all have the same definitions.
Make a motion to approve said resolution?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R 689-0113 that implements the GASB Statement 54. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next thing on our agenda is to receive and review the financial statement and investment summary. I'm glad that you all reviewed all of that investment summary and the financial statements. Does anybody have any questions? I'll make a motion that we approve the financial statement and the investment summary.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? Any other discussion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next thing on our agenda is to receive the youth report. I'm going to turn that over to...
Our first meeting of the new year went great. We are preparing for our annual brisket fundraiser this Sunday, January 20th, from 12:00 to 1:30 p.m. We also have bingo following the fundraiser at 2:00 p.m. Come out to support us and have fun with us. Have to warn you, we're a real competitive group, trust me. But we also discussed an issue about the golf course as a group, and we all gave our personal opinions of if we need it or if we don't. And we came to, we came together on a decision to keep the golf course, because we believe that it benefits our community and so on.
I appreciate y'all considering that, that I don't have any... You know, it's a good economic development tool, it's also a good tool for the youth. It fits in real well with sports and the high school, and it gives the youth other options as to activities. Next thing on our agenda is the administrative reports.
Mayor, don't have pictures of the screw pumps this time.
Oh, me?
A little cold and windy the last few days. Last time I was there, they did have the dirt up around the walls. You remember how the dirt was built around?
Do you have anything to add to that?
They're still working on it, by the way.
They're still making progress.
Looking good out there? So looking good out there?
Also, I want to remind you that the elected officials conference will be held February 1st through 3rd.
And there's a legislative briefing on the 4th.
Okay, in Austin.
Yeah, there's a, the conference is the 1st through the 3rd, and then that briefing is on the 4th.
Most of it, you know, announced to the public, council, mayor, mayor pro temp.
Something like that.
Irene Mason, who are you? Actually, she will be approached out of the elected officials, through the AAMC, for that shoot. We're proud of Irene. Congratulations.
Thank you.
January 21 and 28, South Plains College, and Muleshoe will be hosting an iPad class. I'm registered, we can know where.
I have that.
Yeah, Barnes here.
You don't have to register them, you're up there.
I don't know if you could do that before you take the class. So anyway, that's available. Also, I just want to thank Zaina for helping us out tonight. Leanne has gone to the elected election law seminar, where she will be teaching two places this year. Zaina will be lead it tomorrow for the election law seminar, so we really appreciate it. I know she could be home, probably packed, and maybe introduce some things, but she's always great to help us out.
Thank you.
And we really appreciate that. And that's all I've got. Chief Rice is doing well. He is back to work part-time, getting three or four hours a day again.
Perfect example of how it works. It's good to get another...
That's right, and I encourage everybody to come eat brisket. Of course, you're not a Methodist church, starting at noon.
Play bingo.
And play bingo.
And if they want tickets in advance?
They can see any member of the youth council, they have the tickets. $8.
Do you deliver?
We want, we can deliver, or they can do takeout.
Rather than come and eat and play bingo?
That's right.
Anybody else think? You are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Good, I like that. Thank you.